I'm going to call and order the meeting of the city council for June 3, 2019. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, Madam Clerk, if you could take the roll.
Vaughn.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Clistic.
Belzak.
Here.
Six present and one absent.
We have a quorum. We have a section on our agenda allows for questions and comments not related to our agenda. We allow anybody from the audience to come forward so they don't have to wait till the end of the meeting. Does anybody in the audience at this time want to address the council on anything other than an agenda item? If none, we'll move to approval of the minutes for May 20, 2019. Do we have a motion to approve? Moved by Alderman Shower, seconded in by Alderwoman Sullivan. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Abstain.
Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Belzak.
Abstain.
I have four ayes, one absent, and two abstentions.
The minutes have been approved. We have receiving the communications. Any Aldermen have communications? Alderman Kenny.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I have a communication from Mr. Ralph Ladado, 1500 Block of 71st Streets. I was concerned with the traffic, speed, and nature of traffic going down Sunny First. We discussed about putting a traffic study in one of other neighborhoods, so I've asked municipal services to remove that from that street, and we're going to use 71st Street, which is a bigger street and it's got more of a thoroughfare on it, anyway.
Anyone else? Eric?
Yeah, today, actually, Dan in Municipal Services and I received a communication from Ken Lechner of the 7500 Block of Wilton. He was voicing concerns regarding the noise coming from the Home Depot after hours and early in the morning. Actually, today, Dan has already reached out to the Home Depot, and they're going to be addressing that with the night shift.
Have we been over there? Do we have any idea as to whether or not the sound is really an issue? Dan, have we been over there at all?
You know what it is. It sounds like there's a new manager, and unfortunately, Darien Home Depot seems to be a training ground for a lot of these managers. While we develop a rapport with the manager, next thing we know, six to nine months, they're gone, and we start the process all over again. They've done a lot of upgrades from four electric forklifts, backup beepers, eliminating them. So right now, we think what it may be is the trash, the dumpster enclosure, the trash compactor that may be causing the noise. That was according to one of the representatives from Home Depot this afternoon. So we'll keep an eye on it, and again, we inform the call 911, and as much as people are reluctant to do that, you know, once we can isolate what the issue is, the police department's our best source for that.
I never realized this. Home Depot, I mean, obviously, it's not taken retail around the clock. Do they have people inside Home Depot around the clock working?
Yeah.
I never knew that. Okay.
Yeah, stocking.
Anyone else? Alderman Vaughn?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two. One from Cheryl from the 6900 Block of Clariden Hills Road. She reached out, and I think she reached out to some other folks about the property at 6929 Clariden Hills Road. I think it's under construction right now, but their wheats and grass are over eight inches, and recently, we gave them a citation, so I just wanted to bring that to the forefront. Thank you, Dan, and you too. The second one is from the Facebook community. They reached out asking about the types of pesticides that we use on our grass. Willowbrook is using a natural weed control in their park districts, and we're currently using something, what they described as a chemical cocktail that is equally equivalent to Agent Orange. So I think the mixture is Tri-Mech, a mixture of 2-4D, Mechoprop, and Deco Combi, and I think the effects of these chemicals are very toxic to kids, and it's being used in our parks. I don't know if you can have any information on what types of chemicals we're using on the grass, you know, things like that.
I'm sorry, did you say the parks, first of all?
Yeah.
I just, I know the parks. The park department does their own type of treatment, so I'm not sure what they're using. So I'm not sure what the concoction that you referred to was from, if it's from our specification. I know that we do use some Tri-Mech. There is a limits on all these products that you could use, and how many times you could use them per year. I know we recently went through a bid opening, I want to say it was last year, so we did revise a lot of the specifications that were older specifications, if you want to say. But I'm not, I've never heard it referred to as being so harsh, to be honest with you, you know, so.
Alderman Vaughn, have they contacted the Darien Park District to talk to the park district?
I think so. I think a few of them have. I just wanted to bring it to your forefront, just in case we're using these products. Maybe we can look into using something different at our, and whatever, the things that we're doing around the city, so just.
Yeah, we have to look at it from a staff level first, and probably bring some experts in on this issue, whether it be a consultant to determine whether or not this is, what level of toxicity is in here, because we use it for right-of-bays, basically, right-of-bays and detention centers. So we're very sensitive, because all the treatments obviously flow into stormwater and into rivers and so on and so forth. But we'll evaluate it and determine, you know, what's the cause and effect, and if the contract needs to be revised or put on hold.
You're talking about what we put on the right-of-bays versus what the park district, the park district probably needs to be contacted, and if they haven't contacted them already, I'm sure the park district's made a decision as to what they're going to do.
I think the park district's currently looking into it as well.
I thought the park district turned around and approved a new, whatever it was, but it was, didn't it increase like six times, or? I'm just curious.
I'm not sure what the figures are.
I know that, talking to one of the park district commissioners, who I know well, they indicate, they're going to, they're going to put a larger signage on their parks after they do put the treatment down. Part of the issue, part of the issue, I believe, was that children, and people don't know that it's just, was just put down like in the morning. I guess after 24 hours, there's no possible harm that could come to people based on that. So they were going to put a larger sign up where, when they utilize their fertilizer or their weed killer, so that people would know to stay off the ground. That I do know, but I don't know if they're going to change their treatment.
Yeah, we still, I mean, we tag, tag everything, you know. Maybe a possibility is to review this and look at having the environmental committee take a look at this as well, maybe.
I think so. I think that's a good idea.
Anything else? Any other communications by anyone else on the council? If none, we're going to go to the mayor's report, and it gives me a great pleasure to introduce Ms. Cynthia McGann, who's the executive director of Good Works Incorporated. You might have heard of Sunny Patch Farm. I had an opportunity, we had an opportunity as a council to meet Cynthia about three or four years ago, when she came before the city council. When I was out campaigning, I ran into her while she was preparing seedlings in her garage, and I had an opportunity a couple weeks ago to visit the Sunny Patch Farm behind Eisenhower Junior High, which is really quite a bit of work. And I'd like to, I asked her if she'd come forward. We have some new council members, and I'd like them to be able to hear what the Sunny Patch program is all about. And so Cynthia, you have the floor.
Thank you for inviting us here tonight, and yes, it's been probably four seasons since we were here. Mayor Weaver had invited us to talk. Mary Beth was, has been with me since we started this project. So a little bit, just very little bit about Good Works, which is our nonprofit here in Darien. We started Good Works in 2014. We were, we received our 501(c)(3) status. So shortly after becoming a nonprofit, we were trying to determine what issue. We really wanted to have our own nonprofit, because we had been working in District 61, doing a lot of programming with youth and introducing them to community service. But we wanted to do our own thing, so we started Good Works. We got our 501(c)(3). But we needed to, like, figure out what we were going to focus on. Our whole, our whole focus is to, like, raise awareness about different issues that are affecting our community. And shortly after getting our 501(c)(3) status, I attended a Rotary Club backpack program. They had just taken on a pilot program that they were testing out, and the Rotary Club was packing backpacks for students in District 61 at the time that were going weekends, oftentimes not having access to very much food. So I attended this event and watched some Girl Scout troops, or Brownie troops probably, preparing these bags, and it was just, it really struck me at the time that this issue existed in our community. And so I left that event, and I was, you know, talking to Mary Beth and a couple of other friends, and I said, you know, we really need to raise awareness. I think, I think we might have something that we can help the Rotary Club, talk about what they're doing. But more importantly, what we wanted to do was talk about food insecurity. So, and the fact that food insecurity was existing in our community. And so we, that was our, that was kind of our mission. It became, it became our focus since 2014. And that winter, before the end of 2014, Mary Beth worked with me to coordinate a community discussion. We invited local food pantries. We invited the Northern Illinois Food Bank, which is one of the first organizations that we reached out to after we learned about what the Rotary Club was doing. We wanted to understand, I mean, we wanted to do a deep dive into what is going on here in our community, and what is food insecurity, and why is this happening? So we reached out to the Northern Illinois Food Bank at the time and had contacts there that really began to educate us and confirm for us that there was, in fact, a lot of food gaps in our community. At the time, when we kicked off our Hunger Here campaign in 2014, we were, we were telling people, and at the time, this was the figure, just in District 61 alone, 43% of families qualified for free introduced lunch. So we decided that after we had this community discussion, we thought, as spring was approaching, we thought it might be a good idea to start a garden project. And we thought, you know, what better way to kind of get people, disarm people a bit on the subject, but educate them in a very, you know, unique setting, inviting people into a garden, and getting people to start growing food together? So that was our idea. And in the spring of 2015, in April of 2015, we approached Cindy Hagan of Safety Village, and we pitched the idea to Cindy. I said, you know, this is what we found out recently. We've spent the last six months researching this, and she, she, you know, she's like, let's, let's just, you know, Rototill the whole lawn of Safety Village. Let's just start planting food, because that's how Cindy operates. But we said, no, 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 we're going to try something different. We're going to do container gardens, and we want to assist some of the very families that were relying on the free and reduced backpack meals for the weekend. So we worked with the social workers very last minute. They weren't very pleased with us, understandably. But at the last weeks of school, we're like, could you please try to help us identify families that might benefit from accessing these gardens? So that's how we started the Sunny Patch Project. And the Hagans have been kind enough over the years to let us continue to use the property there at Safety Village. That is what we consider now kind of our pilot site, but we have since moved on to multiple sites in the community, with the site that Mayor Marquesi just visited, which is our largest site now. So over the last four years that we've been doing this, we've expanded. We have gardens at Our Lady of Mount Carmel. We donated a garden to that church, thinking that we could test an idea that we had, which is take the garden right to the food pantry. And Our Lady of Mount Carmel has a, they do non-perishable items. They don't have that much in the way of fresh produce that they can offer their clients. So they were very interested and intrigued and agreed to letting us donate a very small garden. That was back in 2016, I believe, and Mary Beth oversees that garden, and with a handful of volunteers. I do want to just mention that we have, you know, a good number of people here tonight representing the project, and, you know, people have come forward and have offered to help us in the gardens. We have representatives from Our Lady of Peace Food Pantry here tonight. Mary Beth also really helps spearhead that. We grow food in a couple of our locations that goes to Our Lady of Peace as well. Another community partner is the library. We have been, we have a very large garden installation at the library, and we've been doing that since 2016. And this is the first year that the library is going to, they've partnered with a family in the community that lost a daughter, and so they're starting a bee's garden. And so they're turning the focus more on creating this space for this family in memory of their daughter who passed last year. So we are moving off from the library and turning our focus to the farm that Mayor Marquesi talked about. The farm, which is a Sunny Patch Community Farm, was started in 2017 from a grant that we received from Rick Bayless, and he has a Frontera Farmer Foundation. He funds small farms in the Midwest. And we applied for the grant, never expecting to get the grant, but we got the grant. And they say that any farm that gets a grant from the Frontera Foundation pretty much fast-forwards five years to, from where they would typically be had they not gotten the grant. I have to, you know, I've been able to, you know, thank him personally and tell him that, you know, what this impact it's having on our community. And, you know, it has definitely, I mean, you look at the space, we still have a lot of work to do, but again, we are getting more and more help from people in our community, from people in, the majority of people here tonight are from Darien. One of our dear friends, Susan, she's from Downers Grove, and she's, she's committed, you know, countless hours to the project as well. But again, without Mary Beth, I would, you know, Mary Beth is, you know, here every day, you know, whenever, you know, taking my calls, you know, emails, texts, everything. So I really cannot thank her enough. But we, we don't really have a prepared, you know, much prepared. We just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed, because we do, you know, it is frustrating to be a small organization. Why we decided to grow food and become a farm, which is one of the hardest things to do, you know, we say we wouldn't do it any differently, but it's a lot of work, and we need a lot of help, and volunteers. But I have to say that in the last couple of years, we've really seen an increase in interest. We feel like we're gaining traction. People are understanding what we're trying to do. In the last couple of years, we've started trying to teach people in the community about sustainable practices. That was one of the main intents of the farm, the demonstration farm. It's on two tennis courts behind Eisenhower Junior High School. And the whole, the whole idea that we pitched to Frontera and then to the school district, we have a land usage agreement, was that, you know, we wanted to create a community space that could begin to teach people in our community about sustainable practices. We are, we're raising chickens on the property. We are, we have an active composting system on that property. We have composting underway at virtually every installation that we have in the community. And we did address the environmental committee. They invited us to meet with them in May of last year, so we met with them about a year ago to explain some of the work that we're doing and how we were hoping to begin a dialogue with the city about possibly considering curbside composting. That's a very, that's a large, tall order. But we've decided, just on a grassroots level with our project, that what we're doing is we're just engaging people in the community. We have a couple families here tonight who, they've been composting with us since we started. So they basically just share their, save their kitchen scraps, and they are taking their kitchen scraps directly to one of our compost systems and leaving it, and then, you know, just, we do a pail-by-pail kind of swap-out type of system. We have the library composting. We have the Transition Center from Hinsdale District 86. They just formally started composting. They're teaching their young adults about compost. We've been working with them to teach their young adults about composting. What have I forgotten?
You forgot your food, your food rescue.
Well, okay, so, yeah. How long do you want to take? Okay, so, anyway, so then, so, okay, okay. So today, we spent just a short amount of time while we're still trying to get everything in the ground. This is our first harvest, so you guys can kind of pass it around and smell the herbs and whatnot. This season, we are pretty much committed to, this, this season, we're committed to sharing with the community more about things, especially the families that we're working to assist. We are, you know, we're actually growing with a lot of these at-risk families. So we're trying to teach them simple ways in which to prepare many of the foods that we're growing with them and for them. So we, so since 2015, we have grown with our Sunny Patch Project 6,500 pounds of fresh produce. We also have another, another component is that we don't grow all the food. We have people in the community. We have one of our homegrown network, Rick Chakowski, has grown nearly 1,000 pounds. I'm sorry, I don't have the recent numbers. He, he just grows his vegetables and shares the majority of what he grows weekly with our project. He brings the things to the farm. We weigh it. We have a little dance. It's always exciting to get the tally. And, and anyway, so we do have a couple families in the community that are choosing to be involved in that way. So we have people composting. We have people growing food for us. We have people that want to come out and, you know, get their hands dirty and help us plant and harvest and whatnot. But, so the, the component that Mayor Marquesi is asking us to comment about tonight is the newest initiative. It started totally by accident in October of last year, which is typically the beginning of our off-season. We have a couple months that we try to step away. We were delivering kale that we had just harvested that morning with the transition young adults over in Hinsdale. We have a garden at their Transition Center as well. And we had just harvested some kale. It wasn't a terribly impressive yield, but it was enough. And we drove over to West Suburban Community Pantry, which is one of our pantry partners. We have West Suburban. We have Our Lady of Peace. Len Bennis and his staff are here tonight showing support. And then, as I said, we have a garden at Our Lady of Mount Carmel. We were at West Suburban Community Pantry in October and delivering our kale, and the staff, the volunteers, were doing what, partially what they do every, every, like, four days a week, which is they are processing food that comes into a food pantry. If, I'm guessing, many of you have probably volunteered at food pantries before. If you haven't, I recommend that you check it out. It's, it's very interesting to understand the process. We are trying to understand the process fully, and what I mean by that is, on that particular day, we witnessed a lot of food being dumped in dumpsters. Because what's happening, this is not, this is not a reflection on this food pantry. In fact, they're, they're a phenomenal organization. But it is, it is just the, it's the nature of the business. It's the logistics of food and ag in, in our country. And so the fact that one in seven, one in eight people are going hungry, it doesn't need to be that way, because we're disposing 40% of the food that we produce. The farmers are having to leave food in the fields because they can't sell it to stores because of the way it looks. Many of you've probably heard of improper produce, imperfect produce, I'm sorry, the new model, so they're able to sell some of it now. But what we witnessed that day really got us to think that we wanted to begin to try to divert what they were having to throw into the garbage away from the landfills, because you don't want the food in the landfills. That's, that's leading to the climate change. It's, it's a horrendous thing. We don't want that. So we started rescuing food in October, and since October, Mary Beth and maybe about four other volunteers, but Mary Beth and I, almost weekly, have rescued over 15,000 pounds of food since October. And that food has come back to the community. And that food has come back to the community. We try to share it with our at-risk families that we have in our network. We are taking it directly to the food pantries here in our community that typically wouldn't have access to some of the produce that we're resc, this is all produce, by the way. We're not rescuing canned food. This is all produce that is in varying stages of decay. And so we sort through it. We try to get it, we try to share it with families within six hours of getting it. We have three things that we can do with this food, and none of it has to do with a landfill. We're able to share it with families and our, and our food pantry partners. We're able to take it directly to the schools. We've been sharing thousands of pounds of food just in the, in recent months with just District 61. We're pulling up on any given Thursday and dropping off four or 500 pounds of oranges or apples, whatever we've happened to score that day from the food pantry. Because they simply are getting too much. They're getting all the produce that a Caputo's or a Jewel or a Pete's Market. Every time you're watching those produce people, off-shelf everything, it's all going somewhere. We don't know that that's happening. It's all happening in the wee hours of the morning, but it's being shipped off to food pantries. So a food pantry like West Suburban is getting food from the food bank, from the grocery stores. They have a lot of hours. They serve like five different times a week. They're, they are a wonderful pantry. But you can only move the food so fast, logistically. So we offered to try this. We started it in October. They're thrilled because, you know, it's, we are not rescuing, believe me, we are not rescuing nearly enough. That's another component. I mean, we're trying to add this to our, you know, we said, we really, I'm sorry, yeah, we really could, like, not grow food anymore and just rescue food and have a lot of food to share with the community. But we really understand the value of what we're doing. We feel that growing food in the community, teaching families how to grow food, teaching students how to grow food. You know, people have to get back to, you know, what, you know, this type of food. I don't know where it ended up. Anyway, but, so we have been rescuing the food. We are looking for volunteers to join us in that initiative as well. So I have packets for all of the council members, so you can read a bit more about, about our project. And I have handouts for, you know, people in the audience that might be interested to learn more about our project.
Does anybody have a, any questions for Cynthia?
Do you have any openings for taking food out of the area? Here's a homeless shelter downtown Chicago. They cook for these, about 190 homeless people every Saturday.
Right.
And they're always looking for, because the food's always donated.
Right.
So that's, that's some of that food I can, I can very easily take into downtown Chicago.
You could take it down there?
Absolutely.
We, again, we can, we can get a lot more food. You know, like I say, Mary Beth's car, we figured we've gotten about 1,200 pounds of food into it at any given time. But, so we need more vehicles. We've called on Rick, has shown up to help us cart things. But, you know, I mean, we have just picked up thousands of pounds of perfectly, perfectly good food. That fortunately, of the 15,000 pounds, really, we are close to having shared about 50, probably 40%, that we've been able to get to families. Or, you know, through the food pantry network and whatnot, and through our direct connections with families that we assist directly. But then, if we can't share it, if it's just rotting and it's just disgusting, we will offer some of it to our chickens, to our livestock. We also raise worms, so we vermicompost at, at our farm. And so we have, that is a method of getting rid of the food that's starting to decay. And then if it's just, you know, something that we wouldn't even share with the chickens, if they turn up their beaks to it, then it's going in the compost pile. Anyway, they're not very particular. They'll eat anything. But, but anyway, so that's, is that what we covered with you during your visit?
Yeah, and I think the thing that I got out of that, I mean, I was impressed with the farm itself. The food rescue program was impressive. What really came across to me, and you mentioned it that morning, you and Mary Beth were there at the farm and you wish you could have been out doing food rescue, but you had no one there to man the farm.
Right.
So the idea of volunteers is, is equally important. I, I think I told Cynthia that I'd be willing to come over and get my hands dirty.
You did.
And, and help out.
[laughing]
In exchange for some Roma tomatoes or something.
We have, we have lots of tomatoes that need to get in the ground still.
But I was, I was really impressed. And four, I remember, I remember four years ago when you came before the council, and I know Kathy Weaver did a lot for you. And Mr. Gombek, Cynthia told me that in terms of the Public Works Department, you guys have been extremely helpful.
Amazing. I mean, the city has been bent over backwards. Anytime we need mulch or, unfortunately, the one short-sighted with putting the farm where it is, is we can't accept deliveries during school days because of the children. And it's so far off the road that most of the trucks that have to deliver all of this stuff have to be on dry surface. So we've kind of resorted to using my small trailer and we're just kind of doing it a little bit at a time. But it's working.
Any, any other questions for Ms. McGann? Well Cynthia, we had an ulterior motive for having you come tonight. We just didn't want to hear about good works. If you know, that's why I wanted you to bring a lot of guests with you tonight.
Well, I did. I did, we did our best. Thank you, thank you.
I wanted them to be here for this next thing. The City of Darien has developed an award called the Heart of Darien Award. And you are our first recipient of the Heart of Darien Award.
Thank you.
If I could just read a little bit, the City of Darien seeks to honor and show its appreciation for the efforts made by individuals within our community who through their efforts have improved our overall living environment and have enhanced our ability to make Darien a nice place to live. In selecting individuals for this award, I take into consideration the impact these works have on the individuals or groups that they seek to serve, as well as whether or not the service provided is ongoing in its service to the community. The Sunny Patch Farm, Community Farm and Food Forest under the direction of Ms. Cynthia McGann not only fits the criteria for this award, it exceeds our criteria. They continue to find new ways of serving others with this food rescue program, demonstration of food forests, fairy garden for children, as well as its interfacing with numerous community organizations within and outside Darien. The program continues to seek new ways of having, of serving our community. The work of Cynthia McGann and her volunteers is offered unselfishly, and she is a role model for other humanitarians who seek to make our community a special place to live. It's obvious that Ms. McGann has a special place for Darien in her heart. And as a result, we offer a bit of our heart and our thanks in her selection as the first recipient of our Heart of Darien Award. So you're the very first one.
Thank you.
And I'd like to introduce Samantha Schumaker. Samantha, when I went to Samantha with the idea of this award, Samantha works at Belacasa Jewelers and Samantha came up with the design. So I asked her to be here tonight.
So that we could give you the first Heart of Darien Award.
There's even like a trinket? A lovely parting gift. Thank you. And I didn't even give you a tomato plant. [laughing]
You owe me.
I do.
Samantha?
I'm sorry, so where are we?
We're gonna go in the middle here.
Oh, that's beautiful. Oh, thank you.
It says, has the city logo. This is Heart of Darien, Cynthia McGann, Sunny Patch Farm, June 3, 2019.
Thank you. Thank you. Can we, can we redo it to add Mary Beth's name?
Oh, no, no, it's Mary.
Well, she isn't, anyway. So what do we do? I'm sorry.
Will anybody from the, take a picture for the city?
Sure. You got a grant?
It's beautiful. It's just beautiful. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Cynthia, Cynthia, can you, can you show us that? Because we haven't seen it. Can? What? Oh, my goodness, beautiful. Congratulations to you. So well-deserved. It's beautiful.
Congrats.
Thank you. Pass it along and we'll shake your hand. You may not get it back.
Oh, my gosh, keep up the great work.
Thank you. I will, as long as Mary Beth sticks around. Hi, Brian. Nice to see you.
You too.
You know, do you do things in private gardens?
No.
No, 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 that you, I would give you my space. I have nothing in there right now.
You make me feel guilty driving past your house when you're out there working, okay?
And complaining about my yard and all the, you call the compost on the side.
Well, Cynthia is our first winner. We hope throughout the year to be able to find other individuals, high school students, first responders, anybody who's, makes a significant contribution to the city. If you go to the city website, there's a link. It says Heart of Darien. You click on that link and it takes you to the criteria for the award. We hope to get more nominations in the future. We believe that Cynthia is a worthy first recipient of this award. I want to thank Samantha for her hard work at Belacasa. And I want to thank the council for supporting the establishment of this new award. And I want to thank Cynthia McGann for all her hard work for the City of Darien and its residents. Thank you very much. With that, we'll go to our city's clerk, city clerk report.
I have one item. Meet and greet will take place with Mayor Marques on Monday, June 17 at 6:00 PM here at City Hall in the upstairs conference room.
City Administrator's report?
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Department head information and questions. Chief, you have anything for us? I think we, we want to talk a little bit about that other issue.
Well, it came up, so, do you want to take a quick overview or you want to wait?
Yeah, Greg, can you do the, the question that Alderman Clistic brought forward that you and I discussed the other day?
Yes. Alderman Clistic was sent an email from a resident inquiring about the FOID firearms owner's identification card and the revocations that have been made. On the website that she directed us towards showed that there's been 30 revocations in the City of Darien with only 25 people in compliance. And her question to Alderman Clistic was what we, the police department was doing about that, so. I think she referenced the issue in Aurora. I know that issue well. I lived there and I was the chief there for eight years. There's 1.4 million FOID card holders in the state of Illinois and not all of them act like the murderer in Aurora. The Tribune said, like I said, they had 30 revocations. The state doesn't have that great of documentation. We show 40 paper documents, and in fact, I just got one more in the mail today. Of the 30, 25 are in compliance. Of the 25, seven are now in compliance. Of the 18, four have surrendered their FOID cards. But when you surrender your FOID card, there's some, also some administrative paperwork that has to be filed. So they don't have their FOID, but they are not in compliance because they haven't followed up with all the administrative issues. Three are deceased and four have been reinstated. So we've contacted everybody on that list except for two. And so we're still trying to find those last two people. They're not in compliance.
I think what's, what's critical, Chief, is what you explained the other day. People somehow feel that if a FOID card is revoked, it makes the world a safer place. And as the chief explained to me...
Well, I think that's a, a hope. I'm not so certain that we're legislating that hope well. A lot of people can acquire a firearm without a FOID card. There's probably any number of places that we can go across the state to see that happening. Big city to our east and north a little bit, definitely can see those things happening very frequently. I think there's a lot of things with the FOID and gun buybacks and any number of things that are more feel-good than actually have a lot of work in order to try to keep people safe. However, this is a, an act. It is the law. And so as the executive portion of the government, we will do our best to enforce that law. And hopefully it will have some results, but I'm not so certain that it will.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief? Any question for our Municipal Services Director, Mr. Gombek? Can you maybe want to give us a little update on where we are with our streets and our curb and gutter?
Yeah, currently, we're, like we said before, we're trying to expedite all operations east of Cass and north of Plainfield or north of 75th Street. The biggest projects there are the ditching projects, the site, a concrete project and the surfacing project. The concrete project, we've, we're in a process completing the last leg, which is on Clarinels Road, so we started that today. We're anticipating that the asphalt resurfacing vendors should be in towards the later part of this week yet. So we've really been tuning things up, if you want to say, because of the weather. So we're hopefully going to be catching, catching up and goal is still to be completed by July 4.
So we think we'll be ready for the 4th of July parade?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
One way or the other, there will be a great parade. It'll be all safe.
We're gonna hold you there.
No pressure.
We're gonna hold you to that, Tim. Any questions for McGann or the chief? Okay, if none, we move on to the Treasury's report. Who, he has three warrants for us tonight, Mike?
Mayor, this evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 181927 in the amount of $11,628.65 from the listed funds.
Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any questions? If none, the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Shauer?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Requesting council's approval of warrant number 192003 in the amount of $4,672 from the general fund.
Motion to approve. Alderman Shauer, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Questions, comments? If none, the roll.
Shauer?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
And the final one, Mike.
Requesting council's approval of warrant number 192004 in the amount of $186,699.38 from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended May 23 in the amount of $254,501.73 for a total to be approved of $441,201.11.
Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Questions, comments? If none, the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shauer?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Warrants have been approved. That takes us to standing committee reports. Do we have any reports from any of the chairs? Alderman Sullivan?
The Admin and Finance Committee met tonight and the minutes from the November 5, 2018 meeting was, were approved at tonight's meeting. And our next Admin-Finance meeting will be held on Monday, July 1, 2019 at 6:00 PM in the upstairs meeting room, pending city council meeting and agenda items.
Thank you. Alderman Belzak?
The next municipal services meeting will be on June 24 at 7:00 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Sir Mayor. I'm trying to get used to that, so I was Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, right.
Right, not no more. The Police Committee meeting will, the Police Committee will be meeting on Monday, June 17 at 6:00 PM across the street in the police training room, pending agenda items.
Thank you. Takes us to questions and comments that are agenda-related. Any Aldermen have questions regarding anything on the agenda? Or does anyone in our audience have questions regarding anything on our consent agenda If none, moves us to old business. There being no old business, we go to our consent agenda. Bear with me. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve August 9, 10, and 11 as the date for the Darien Chamber of Commerce to hold the Darien Fest 2019 celebration. And then we have a listing of the streets that are going to be closed for that. And then the second part of that is providing police protection and public work services for the Darien Fest 2019 as per attached agreement. A, consideration of a motion to approve August 9, 10, and 11 as the date for the Darien Chamber of Commerce to hold the Darien Fest 2019 celebration. And then, we have a listing of the streets that are going to be closed for that. And then, the second part of that is providing police protection and public work services for the Darien Fest 2019 as per attached agreement. Item B, consideration of a motion granting a waiver of the $50 a day fee for the temporary liquor license for Darien Fest 2019. Item C, consideration of a motion to grant a waiver of the raffle license bond requirement for the Darien Lions Club Foundation. Consideration of a motion to approve the payment of annual dues for the Darien Police Department participation with the DuPage Metropolitan Enforcement Group, or known as DUMEG, using state drug forfeiture funds in the amount of $17,680. Item E, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of five Motorola APX 6,000 portable radios from the Emergency Telephone System Board, ETSB of DuPage County, using Department of Justice award money in the amount of $20,979.65. Item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement, intergovernmental police service assistance agreement to join the DuPage Metropolitan Emergency Response and Investigation Team, which is known as MERIT. Item G, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of two Kubota Model ZD1511RL60R zero-turn riding mowers from Russo Power Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $33,834.44. Item H, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of one radio detection RD8100PXL TX10B utility location system from Associated Technical Services ATS in an amount not to exceed $8,241. Item I, consideration of a motion to approve resolution accepting a proposal from Midwest Office Interiors to replace the municipal services facility task chairs in an amount not to exceed $5,467.44. Item J, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of one 2019 telehandler CAT TH3557D in an amount not to exceed $112,040 from Eltoffer Caterpillar Incorporated. Item K, consideration of a motion, resolution authorizing the purchase of one 2019 Caterpillar Model 440-07 backhoe loader in an amount not to exceed $135,930 from Eltifor Caterpillar Incorporated. And item L, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Downers Grove regarding street maintenance project on Williams Street between Plainfield Road and 75th Street within the corporate limits of the City of Darien. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. And the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
It takes us to new business, and there's no items under new business. Takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Do any of the Aldermen have any comments to offer? Anyone in the audience? If none, then I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Aye, so move.
Moved by Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Shower. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, meetings adjourn. Thank you.